All right, what's up?
What's the matter?
Oh, she didn't go.
Oh, I see. Just give it a second here.
Another bite.
We're sending that to the video.
No one's doing again.
No attorneys only.
No counsel.
Wendy? Could you lower the line?
That got you? Okay. Okay. We're good. Stand, begin.
All right. So, city council work session, Rocktober 25th, 2023. Your call, please.
Mayor Allison, I don't think he's gonna try, but maybe we'll see him later, but he's absent right now. Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Wendy Rainey.
Here.
Ann Shaper is absent. Kristen Carpenter is absent. Ken Jones.
Here.
That's a form of appearance.
Okay, so the work thought. Work session topic: Sales Tax, Property Tax, Civil UI, Continue Discussion with City Attorney Holly Wealth and Disco. Who was that? Who ordered it? What you got it right? Any question on the agenda here as far as moving forward? We're on the same page? Or where do we want to get started?
I think Holly will start for us.
Yes, I'm sorry. Bear with me. I am trying. I've lost the... Oh, well. So, I've lost some of the window that allows me to control the PowerPoint, but I think that I can just click through it, and so we'll suffer through it. So, anyway, the purpose of this meeting, which is our second work session, is to roll out a working draft for council and to really take some of the concepts that we've been discussing and put them into a document that we can all work with that is tangible. The step, the first step we're gonna work on tonight, and we're gonna move fast in order to get to the substance and spend less time talking about the sort of policies and really looking at how we execute them. So, the first step, we're gonna discuss property tax exemptions that are in the proposed ordinance and really focus in on the economic development exemption as well. Our next step is to talk about sales tax exemptions, tax caps, and really the taxation on resale goods and services, these areas of taxation or sales taxation that have real impact on the community, but also on the city's budget. The next thing we will do is talk about upcoming work that legal has with the administration, and that's more for the administration and enforcement components and provisions in the code and making sure that we get those revisions. And while we've been working with council on these larger concepts, we are also delving into work with the administration on those the execution of the administrative concepts. So, it's still a working draft in that sense as well. The last step is to sort of discuss with council and consolidate the thoughts and recommendations that you share, the priorities, schedule a next work session for presentation, and then delve into the draft ordinance for more formal consideration by the council. So, we're sure we're starting in a place that has all of your thoughts. One disclaimer, this is a draft ordinance, which means a stamped draft. That's unusual for council. We're usually starting with a ordinance prepared for introduction. For that reason, I mean, council should expect to see sections disappear. There are, there are still a lot of changes that will come as we go through this. So, it's not, this is not a draft intended for adoption in that sense. So, there are, for example, there are sections that are not in here that have nothing to do with property or sales tax, but have something to do with a dissolved trust fund, and that chapter's been removed. So, before the adoption of this title rewrite, there are discussions with council that will take place that are outside the property and sales tax realm. That is not the focus of our meeting tonight, and I just wanted to make sure I said that because I know a lot of you have spent a lot of time with this, and I don't want you to think that we are ignoring those other areas. So, I'm going to now, and so the other areas that we're gonna talk about later, but I just wanted to flag, they really, the self-insurance trust fund, which is gone. So, just keep that in mind. Changes to the confidentiality of tax records and making sure that's proper language. Changes to the raw fish tax application process or appeal process, and that's really about the the process of protest and those components, and we will talk about fish tax in its entirety later. Changes to the city's special assessment district and development plan process, which needed to be updated to comply with Alaska statute and to reflect a more streamlined, easier-to-execute process. And then the creation of Title VII, which is where we are placing without further review at this time anyway, since we have enough to to bite off with Title V, that will be your city-owned and acquired property chapter provision. So, that's just a very quick rundown, just in case any of your questions are stemmed from those areas. So, I am just going to hand the, hand the conversation over to Jess so she can jump into property tax, so we can make sure that economic development exemption gets the attention that you guys wanted to make sure it got after our last work session.
Yeah. So, starting from a high level and going back to our first work session, under the property tax provisions, we were looking at making sure that the exemptions reflected the exemptions that are being used in Cordova currently, that you were aware of the optional exemptions that are available to you under state statute. And then we were looking at this economic development exemption and the changes that have been made at the state level and how Cordova wants to approach that in the future. Structurally, also, you'll see in the draft ordinance that we've kind of tried to coalesce all of the applications for exemption around the same timeline, but for one that has logistical reasons that it would be on a different timeline. But those are questions that we'll pick up with administration, but that's kind of the structure now is we have the imposition and enforcement of property tax as a whole, and then we have this, the structural or a chapter addressing the application process for exemptions, and then we have the actual exemptions and their criteria put forth in a chapter of its own, Chapter 5.17. So, that's where the actual exemptions are laid out at this point. The first being the mandatory senior citizen and disabled veterans exemption. That was already in Cordova's code. It was not changed. We left it as is after our first work session where we talked about that briefly. It remains in place. The second will now be the mandatory nonprofit exemption. And this, this exemption exists regardless of whether it's codified. The city receives these applications from nonprofit and charitable organizations and deals with those applications and awards the exemption where, where it needs to because it is a mandatory exemption under both the Constitution and state statute. We've gone ahead and codified it to make sure that there's clear application requirements. As long as the city is fielding those applications, it's going to be much easier for everyone if the, if the manner of application and issuing of the exemption or granting of the exemption is codified. So, we put in place those parameters that are, that are aligned with the constitutional requirements and all the case law that we have on that exemption currently. The low-income housing exemption has been added. It's been codified at the request of an administration because I think this is one that they fielded requests for. It is, again, all of these exemptions are found in state law on the property tax side. So, it's in 2945050, the optional, the optional exemptions that are set forth in state law. So, you'll see that one. It provides tax relief to those who are residing in low-income housing while still preserving the city's ability to receive payments from housing authorities or other payments in lieu of taxes. So, it just allows the city to engage in, in those low-income housing efforts and still provide a tax exemption to those who, who actually live in low-income housing. The temporary subdivision exemption is also an optional exemption set forth in state law. It's now codified in the draft, and it'll bring any use of the application in Cordova into compliance with state law. I think this is another one that administration has just had to deal with as people come in. And now it will be codified in a way that provides them the process and parameters necessary to administer it clearly. And then that brings us to the economic development property exemption. Our first work session, we had a lot of discussion on, on the kind of expansive nature of the changes. We had a little bit of discussion on the legislature's efforts last year to start addressing blighted property, which will most likely come forth again in this year's legislative session. We took some feedback from council members as far as specific parameters that we're seeking to provide certain, you know, incentives for certain types of housing or certain types of projects. What we provided at the last work session, which I unfortunately could not attend, but watched afterwards since, since we were recorded, there was, there was the broad decision to go ahead and move forward utilizing the broad definition that's been provided by the state now so that the city can take in these applications again on your structured application process now. And then it sets broad parameters of, you know, you can issue, the exemption shall be up to 100% of the assessed value of property for up to five consecutive years at the discretion of city council, and the process is set forth for how you would determine how to use those different tools, as well as the deferral tool that, again, is, is up to a five-year, five-year maximum of time. So, what this does is it allows Cordova to go ahead and take advantage of the new definition for property used for economic development. It allows you to start incentivizing the kind of projects and development that you want to see occur. And then I do understand that, I think there's probably a broader discussion to be, I mean, the, the number of things that came up during the first session about potential use, not only for housing incentives, but also for kind of mixed-use development or downtown development and other, other aspects. The city may continue to, to work on those projects, but I think as a starting point, it seemed that we had coalesced around providing this kind of discretion and latitude to council to use the exemption. So, that, that is about, that's the quick run-through of the exemptions that have been added. Whether they were, you know, there before and have been clarified and moved into a different spot or actually added to reflect current use by the city and the economic development property approach. I don't know if we want to discuss any questions or take any questions now, or Holly, did, how were you thinking about?
Yeah, that sounds good. If we, probably would be easiest to ask the property tax exemption questions now and then help into sales.
Okay.
Question? Can we, like, we kind of skimmed over it. The temporary landscape exemption, is that, I mean, it seems you were going to do what was codified and then referencing back to state requirements. Is that something out of the state requirement?
The landscape exemption, I do not believe is a required exemption. I believe it's in the optional section of the statute.
Is, is something, I guess. Do we currently see anything on this, Susan?
It is in our code, and in 20 years, I think I've seen it once.
I'm just curious. We kind of skimmed over it. Wanted to see if there is trust in us for having that in there. That's all.
Thanks. Yeah. It is existing, and there was discussion at the first work session just about the, I think you guys were trying to, with, with the economic development exemption and a, and considerations of how to utilize that. I do think that the temporary landscape exemption is more in the aesthetic realm. You know, it is people updating the outside of properties and trying to, to bring them up to a place where aesthetically they're, they are improved, and I know that you guys were looking, that your main thrust in looking at new exemptions was to kind of get to a greater deal of, of development or improvement than that exemption provides. It does exist in code, and we did, we left it in there. But I think it is that, it's the more surface level of aesthetic improvement to a property that would then qualify for a certain amount of exemption.
I guess it just, to me, as I read through it, it's, it's open for a lot of interpretation. And that's, I guess, is a burden put on administration? So. Yeah, thank you.
I had a question in 515020, mobile homes, subject to provisions. So, it says, "Mobile homes, trailers, house trailers used intended for uses residential office or commercial purposes and attached to land or connected to water, gas, electric, and sewage." So, we have food trucks, but some of them are connected to the system and some of them aren't. How, how, how they fit in? Because like, some of the, some of the empty lots that food trucks are utilizing have ability for them to hook in their systems, but some of them don't. So, I just want to see how we're, what we're doing with that.
And I don't, I don't think the intent is, is for the mobile home exemption to capture food trucks. I believe they're normally captured in other, Holly, I'm, I'm thinking of another community that we've dealt with this issue, and I, I don't think the mobile home exemption is trying to capture food trucks, but that is under the definition being that it includes commercial. It's a good question as to how it's being applied in Cordova and whether you're capturing, whether they're eligible for that exemption. We have other communities that are breaking out food trucks, I believe, into the kind of city property basket. Am I correct, Holly? I think we're seeing other people move it into its own category because it is regulated by the state separately with different parameters. But it's, it's a point well taken that it perhaps could fall into the exemption, or it could definitionally appear to fall into this exemption. I hadn't thought about it till you raised it just now.
And it's a good example, too, of how we see the interplay between sales tax and property tax because there are many exemptions that a, you know, a commercial kitchen gets the benefit of, and the sales tax realm and the property tax realm is trying to really look at these, really, real property ownership. And even when you have, so I, I, it's just one thing that I see communities balancing when they do move away from permitting the exemption or sort of narrowly define who gets to benefit from the exemption. A lot of time, they're looking at their revenue raising portfolio rather than just their interpretation of the language. So, long as they stay within the optional exemption language from the state, it's really, you know, they, there is actually a little flexibility there. I don't know if you agree, Jess, but that's.
I, I do on the front end. I'm not sure that I've looked at. I don't understand how the state's regulating food trucks now that we're talking about this. So, I don't know something about the way the state is defining those entities or the, the equipment they're using. I don't know if somehow their definition would clearly make them not a mobile home for some reason, like, but it's, it's a question. I can look at that if we haven't already in other contexts.
Yeah, thanks for this. I agree with Councilman Kinsman's assessment. This is pretty broad on this economic development property exemption. And so, I'm curious, I guess, from a legal perspective, when we get into, you know, evaluating each individual application, there needs to be some sort of a process or a matrix or something drafted for the administration side to make sure that we don't get any, you know, playing favorites on certain projects, right? I mean, we need to spend some time to talk about, I guess, what more specifics of this is gonna look like because, you know, if you get one person applying because they built a house, another person applying because they built a house, well, we don't want to treat them differently. That can open up a can of worms. So, do you foresee us needing to get some sort of administrative matrix to, to score these by, when, you know, it says it's up to council's discretion, but, you know, we need to make sure that the things are treated legally, right?
Yes, and I think, I think given the breadth of the, and remember that we're on the front end of this change to the state statute, so we're gonna be seeing how everybody is kind of interfacing with it and changing and trying to utilize the exemption now. But I think the exemption itself through the definition gives certain, you know, parameters that are, that are very broad. Again, to your point, there's a lot of discretion, a lot of interpretation there, but I think if council is working within those rules to make sure that they tie it to one of those pieces of the definition. And then to your, to your point, there's just gonna be, you know, keeping the due process, making sure that the application process runs as it's now set forth in the ordinance and that everything's run through the same way. It, it shouldn't be problematic, but yes, to your point, if we get wildly disparate applications, it may be something that council keeps returning to. I also got the impression from earlier sessions that you all might be looking at, you know, improvement districts or other things downtown and other things that would start to kind of interface with this or take like, aspects of what you're trying to accomplish, make it shifted into other efforts in ways. So, yes, I think there's going to have to be a clear and concise administration of the exemption when you receive applications. I also, I'm just curious. I'd be curious to hear Susan's thoughts and Sam's thoughts on how many applications you think you'll receive. You know, is this something that you guys feel like this definition has been holding people back significantly, and now because the definition is so broad, are you gonna see a rush of applications, or is this definition still in a community the size of Cordova? I guess, what you, what you see the interplay to be in, is it concerning? Do you think that we should be trying to put more parameters into the next draft and trying to nail it down further? I think we had tried to avoid putting some of the really strict parameters that would make it very clear that you're trying to only incentivize one kind of housing because you don't want to have to come back and keep, you know, if, if your, if the ordinance is that restrictive, and so you're not taking example, advantage of the expansion of the definition. We didn't want to do that, but at the same time, if, if there's discomfort with how broad we are now, we could come back and try and, try and narrow things down further.
I, I don't, I can't know how many we get. I, I think over the years when it was written in that crazy way that, well, like it is now, that it's impossible to fit. I think some of the city lots that sold to companies, they may be, you know, thought about it or asking questions about it, but realized that it didn't fit for them, so they didn't do it, but not very many over the years. But I think once we do one, we'll start getting more for sure. So, I think it's going to be difficult if it doesn't have more specific parameters. I mean, does the, when you say council discretion, I mean, I feel like the number of years should be clear, should be one, three, or five, or whatever, not up to, because that would be hard.
All right. Going back to, what's kind of going back in here with set parameters, and I know Councilmember Jones has outlays, you know, if you're, if you fit within this box, it's three years. If you fit within this box, it's two years, if you, five years, you know, insert a number of years, and it, again, correlates with some kind of improvement, and whether that's a subdivision, an individual home, multi-dwelling. Again, if you're doing this, you get this, and that is gonna keep it so that, yeah, there's not speculation, there's not any, or less, less risk of legal ramifications. If, no matter who the council is, they can go and look at this. No matter who the administration is, they can go and look at this. And if it starts getting, you know, there's always gonna be some finite things that we can look at, but at a broad level, it should be, if I'm a citizen also, I should be able to look at it and not have to come and ask Susan or anyone in the staff. I should be able to look and interpret it myself. Because right now, what I look at is, all right, well, I guess I better go talk with Susan and take that first time. And I know that's part of what he does, but there's other things you can, if I could look at it and say, okay, I'm clearly gonna do this, and my re, and my reward is I get this. And I don't, I don't think that's out of the realm unless you're saying that we can't, as a city, create that. We have to wait for state to define that. I don't, I don't think, hopefully, that's not what I'm understanding.
No, no, I don't think that's true. I think under the definition, you can create your own eligibility criteria, and if you want to, if you want to break it out by, by different uses and different time periods, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. I think we had determined that we weren't gonna engage in that. We were gonna try and keep it broad, but seeing it on paper is different, seeing that it's, it's as broad as it is. You know, there may be, you know, if we want to go back the other way, I think just need to consider the scope of that. I have what Councilmember Jones had proposed. I think it mainly went to residential. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now. I think it mainly went to residential. But anyway, I can, I can pull it up again and look at it, and we can figure out if it, if it captures the scope of what you're trying to, trying to incentivize. I've heard a lot of discussion around housing primarily, and then I've also heard discussion around mixed use in the business district downtown Main Street. So, you know, if we, if, if council has clear parameters, or if, or if we want to work off of Councilmember Jones's example to start, we can, we can restructure to do that. It was an effort to leave it as open as possible, but we can put parameters back in.
And I'll just add to that, and Jess, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things we wanted to do is, you know, we were, so council budgeted for a Title V rewrite. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at the title comprehensively. When we looked at the economic development exemption, we saw a really great sort of policy tool for council to utilize now that the legislature has allowed you to do that, has, has really given, given it some, you know, made it something that's usable. Honestly, I mean, we can, so keeping it broad, it makes sure that we haven't foreclosed the use of that exemption, but taking and sort of bifurcating the economic development exemption components and, and having the time to do that without limiting the city's or the council's ability to use it. We thought that that was sort of a reflection of what council wanted to do, which was to make sure you could incentivize the development you wanted to, but take the time to really go through what kind of development you're looking at incentivizing and what pieces you, you want, and, and also explore how do we need to do this on a code level, or can it be done? And I think council's sort of suggesting this, but can it be done on a and on administrative front, you know, where you have an application packet, you have a process that very clearly that we send them to in the code, you know, and it very clearly lays out some of the parameters that you're looking for. And, I mean, Jess, I, I mean, I will, I know that I, I'll let Jess talk to that, to the extent that that's something council wants to delve into, but that was really what we were trying to do. Because this, you could have five work sessions on this, you know, just developing what you want to incentivize, really. There's just so much policy underlying this exemption. It's very loaded.
Yeah. You could also, I mean, you could also structure in a way that you're, you're excluding the development. You don't want to benefit from it. You know, I mean, there's just so many ways of tackling it. You could come at it from the other direction of like, like, it does not include X, Y, and Z. If you're wanting to keep a really broad scope, but you're trying to shut out certain types of development from an exemption, like it, I just, I do think there was an effort to kind of move, move the ordinance forward as a whole and not restrict your ability to try and, try and play with this and incentivize the behavior you want, but, but it is, it is very broad. I don't disagree with any of the comments about how broad it is and the fact that it, it requires that it will require some kind of administrative effort.
Okay, we have comments in the room.
Excuse me. So, I'm thinking about this, and I've always thought about ordinances in terms of policy. And then we have procedures, which is what falls to the staff and the administration. And I guess, I like this broad because it leaves us open, because who knows what's gonna come before us and be proposed. But I think that the step that comes to planning or to the clerk's office, you know, that's a packet. This is someone says, okay, I'm really interested in this. What does it include? And then you could have like housing, multi-use housing or multi, you know, I'm really big on the Main Street economic development, things like that, but have it so that that's where the people come and get the detail and the nitty-gritty as at the administrative level. I guess that's, that's just for me. When I was always writing policies, they were broad. And then procedures were, put your gloves on in the museum and do all that. So, you know, I don't want to limit us to some, I don't know, maybe pie in the sky, good idea. And I think this is okay the way it is.
Would it, would it be easier to quantify a new dollar? I mean, if somebody comes in here and says, I wanna, I'm gonna do project X, Y, and Z, it's gonna cost $75,000. I'd say, go do your project and leave us alone. But if somebody comes in and says, I'm gonna invest a million dollars into this infrastructure. Then we need to sit down and talk and see if we can work with them. That, for me, simplifies it, is where we need to be at. I don't know if we're talking about taking money back for little mom-and-pop operations. I'm thinking we're talking about major development here. And, and to be clear, it doesn't take much to get over a million dollars on a building today, so. But I think that's where we could start putting a cutoff or where we, where we kind of quantify it there.
So, I think, I think regardless of how we end up addressing it, I think what I'm hearing is that we need more parameters, whether they're in the exemption criteria themselves, or whether we go back to when I restructured these exemptions in the application process, economic development used to sit by itself and have its own application process separate from the other exemptions that are pulled from state statute. And it may be wise to pull out economic development once again so that whether it's through the application procedure and an application packet, or it's through the actual criteria, if we can identify to the mayor's point, a dollar amount or, or some qual, some sector of development, however, however you decide to do it. One way or another, it sounds like we need more parameters on the front end, just so that it isn't left purely to a Susan drafting a document on her own to tell Um, one way or another, it sounds like we need more parameters on the front end, just so that it isn't left purely to a Susan drafting a document on her own to tell people what their, there, there does need to be counsel. Input um into that, whether it comes through administration or not, I guess at the end of the day, so. Um, I guess the, the question for me, I think, is that you guys have a lot of sales tax exemptions to work through, and I think your budget process is also starting. Um, I just don't know, do you want me to go back to um? The parameters council member Jones provided in that structure at least, and then take from this kind of the, the notion that we, as much as. There may be a local business component from what I heard in the first work session. Um, it's not at the sacrifice of a dollar amount, like we're not, we're not looking for tiny projects to give, to give exemptions back to. We want to have something ensuring that this is a larger scale development. Um, and then housing and some kind of mixed use or commercial notion to it. Do you um? Is that the best way to move forward for us to just try and structure it around kind of those, those echelons that, that council member Jones, it sounds like there's kind of general consensus that that's. A good place to start.
Yeah.
I guess we're seeing that's not yes.
Yeah, so I guess my only comment would be that, you know, I don't want to put that threshold too high. As far as a dollar amount goes, um, because there are. Smaller projects that could have an impact and a benefit to the community that, you know. Somebody puts fifty to a hundred thousand dollars into a large multi or a large single family home to turn it into a multifamily property. And I, I think that should qualify, uh, you know, if you take fifty to a hundred grand. Turn it into a triplex or something, you know, that's adding housing units to the community. That's what we're trying to do, at least that's what I'm trying to do. Um, with this exemption and you know, there's. Other, you know, other economic development that could occur, but yeah, I do agree that there shouldn't be a level. I'm just not sure at what level that should be. I don't want to see it. At a hundred and fifty or more, I think it should be maybe at fifty or seventy five thousand. Anything above that, I don't, I don't know how everybody else feels.
I think we can create this structure and that might help people kind of identify, because if we, if we. Make sure that there's a structure there that's addressing both the, the type of development potentially and then dollar amounts that might. This might be the kind of thing that it's helpful for you guys to see, and we've clearly taken the most extant expansive tact on this first draft, but for the second draft. We can switch back to having a, a clear set of parameters and then the discussion around amounts and those kinds of things that might become more transparent, like what you're actually incentivizing. Um, through the structure, if it's in front of you. Um, if you guys want to, I don't mean to rush you. If you want to have more discussion on it now, but this might just be the kind of thing that it's helpful to have it in front of you to then nail down kind of where you're headed um on the next round.
Yeah, that's, and for me, I've taken that example of turning a home with hot dog dollars into a threat. I mean, that's, for me, that's putting money right into the pocket of homeowners. There's, we're in a crazy market here, build it and then able to come. We don't have any problems with no vacancies, so. I don't see why the taxpayer would subsidize your business venture that's going to financially reward you. Now, if you're going to come in here and like this, I think at one point, the city manager was working on a project. On our creek road, they're going to come in and excavate the, uh, material out and and put in home sites for six or seven, eight home sites. Yeah, we want that. Let's, let's work with that. We're talking a lot of dollars there, but. I think for me personally, if I go out and build a home, it's going to benefit me personally. You know, I'm sure it's going to add to the community, but I don't, I don't need any taxpayer money to help me do that. Uh, because we're rewarding enough out there. We've got such a. An economy that is short on housing, anything to build, you can either rent, sell or keep, so that's, that's kind of mind you of it. Can we, can I have a question on, on page thirty seven on the refund for construction services?
I think we're going to.
I'm going to have a game.
Kevin, go ahead. So I mean, going back to, to some extent, what you're saying, uh, council member Baylor, yes, but it's not happening. Yes, it's going to be a benefit to someone if they build a home, a triplex or fourplex. But the, the problem is what can we do to stimulate happening in our community? Because it's not happening and we need, we need housing in this community. Do we need a single family home? No, not as much. And I, to that point, yes, but we can, whatever it takes to, to stimulate our community to having multi. Multi-purpose home, what, multi-zone home, um, property. The other thing is going back into, if we are going to subsidize this, and that's what it is, it's a subsidy of some kind. Um, that we get to control some of the parameters such as, if you're going to fall for this, this is going to be an inspected project. It's not Joe Schmo who gets to go out there with his own buddies and uh, create this fourplex that isn't safe. That isn't, you know, that, that isn't reliable, that isn't a place that we want to put our teachers, nurses, our children into that home. Um, so I, I would like to see that, because that is something that is severely lacking in our community is any kind of inspection on construction projects. But it does add more money to it.
My name is Don Hallow. Any other comments?
You had your hand up? Uh, yeah, I was just going to chime in from staff perspective, you know, I mean, as someone who lives and dies by the code, um. I would have a nightmare trying to administer this without criteria. Um, and I don't need a harp on that more because it sounds like everyone else is on the same page. So that was one of my notes, just to say that, uh, you know, there needs to be some sort of matrix or something. I don't know if a dollar value is actually appropriate. How does somebody prove how much this project is going to truly cost? Um, you know, they can build a bull barn with a fancy uh brass fire pole that costs a million dollars and, uh, you know. That person's getting a break, you know, I think you need a type of thing that are going to be more substantial to say this is the benefit of meaning not X dollar, you know. I'm going to build a two dwelling house or a four dwelling house. And then that way you can tie it to something like if you do two dwellings, you can, you can have this percentage off for this many years. And then if you go up another dwelling, you know, have some sort of tiered system like that. Um, because again, you know, I just don't see how we get people to prove that they're actually, how much they're going to truly invest into a project. Um, before it started, whereas if there's um, some sort of either square footage or dwelling requirement, then you know, that is at the completion of the project, we know what we're getting. Um, another, excuse me, another thing that I wanted to say was, um. On I M C in that section, um, it talks about that you're going to exempt up to one hundred percent of the assessed value. Um, I think this has been rounded by other council members before, but I don't think you should exempt to a hundred percent. Uh, maybe, you know, there's no increase on, or there's no tax on the increased value for a certain number of years, but they're still paying that base that they were paying for development. So then the city's not losing any money. We're just not gaining that new tax revenue for a few years. Um, so that's just something that I wanted to point out and, um, yeah, I. Uh, council member Kinzen said, I think it'd be great to include some sort of requirement for. Um, inspections, just make sure that we're also getting quality builds of these projects, so.
Yeah, sorry on the increased assessed value, Kevin. I meant to, I, I'm, I thought I put that in there. You had said that at a previous work session.
And one thing too, like this is a great topic. What you guys are doing right now. Is you don't need us for, right? Like, you know, we don't need lawyers to develop the policy in this way. I mean, we don't add, we don't have a lot of value added to that discussion of what do we really care about? Do we want to incentivize single family homes or multifamily? I mean, you have a really knowledgeable. Uh, council and staff, and it, I think one of the things you can do is have a work session where really you're coming away with, for us, just a list. You know, we want to use economic development exemption to incentivize these five things. They mean this to us. They are, we want to incentivize multifamily housing. We want to incentivize um. Uh, jobs that bring in at least fifty employees or ten employees, you know, or whatever it is, you know, whatever's on your list. And then that allows too for. Uh, staff to look at the actual revenue consequences of some of these exemptions and say, you know, we want to see, you know, Kevin, your comments, those are great. You know, we see five, we want to see a five-year exemption or we want to see whatever that is. And then that's when, I mean, that's, you know, Jess could take that back and turn that into the updated criteria. Because like, you know, I think unless Jess, you disagree, but I think that.
No, I fully agree. I, I'm taking, I mean, from the first session when you guys were speaking, like I do have a sense of what's happening, but it is going to be an iterative process that I think would probably move, be moved along by you guys coalescing around. You know, I can keep coming back with, and again, the structure matters. So if we come back with the structure and then if the things aren't what the things that you want. You can replace those things, but I, I fully agree. It sounds like you guys are working toward but have not fully landed on. What the highest priorities are and what, what level of years you would assign to different things and all of that. But again, we can come back with a structure and you guys can continue to work on your end on what, what fills in that structure. I think we've, I think we've all clearly identified and I had the same thought when this was done, that this is probably. Pretty hard to implement to Kevin's point. I don't know that it, like being this broad is probably not um, going to work out well for administration once people realize it exists. So.
I just clarify a comment and go back to um inspections. I want to make sure it's clear that if we're giving this subsidiary break. That the burden of that inspection falls on the homeowner. It's not, if we're saying we don't have money, that's fine. That's why. For even more reason for us, if we're going to give something, we want something in return at the expense of whomever the, the purchaser builder is. And not on the city at all.
Yeah.
And I can just add one more thing, uh, that, uh, just I remember. We all know how hard it is to change code once you create code, um, hence this process. Um, one suggestion is possibly putting in a sunset clause on some of these criteria. So then it forces us to revisit them in the future and it's not something that's just stuck in code forever. Uh, I've seen that done a lot with these uh incentives, because like I said, you know, you put something in code. Are you going to get around to it in the next five, ten, fifteen years to update it if it's being, you know? If it does become being abused, but it's not blatantly being abused and be, you don't realize that, I'm, I'm just something to figure out, so.
That's a good point.
Any other comments, question?
Thank you.
Okay, we're wrapped up with that.
Okay, Jess, do we have any more on property tax that we need to delve into?
I, I really think that's it. I think, um.
Okay, all right, I get it.
All right, go ahead. To the extent, can I get an up-down somehow on the landscape? I, I know that people commented on realizing that the landscape and improvement, exterior improvement one was there and Susan was saying it's not well utilized. Do you guys want that in the next draft or are you suggesting that we remove it from code? Is there consensus on that?
I would say remove it, and if we want to adapt something there, that to me falls under our more of the economic development. If we want to include something there after we have that conversation of exterior and, and then providing clear guidance, you know, going back to policy and procedure. And we have a fair procedure on how this is implemented by staff. I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick grammar thing moving forward with this, if we're coming up with multiple um drafts. Um, if we could just drop the whole, um, his. Tim originally changed it into there like on page thirteen, but it's making investigations be a lesser. Or there, assigned deputy is moving forward. I just want to kind of update the language so that it's a little more aligned with. Current politics.
I'm, I'm happy to take that. People go back and forth between, I don't know how Holly feels about this. She probably has feelings about words. Um, but people go back and forth between there or actually saying his or her or, you know, that kind of thing. So we can go to there. I think grammatically sometimes it drives grammarians crazy. Um, but we can, we can certainly, I tried, I think I added they in a couple of places, but I wasn't sure what, what Cordova's convention was, so. If it's they, then we'll, we'll make sure it's consistent. And that's what we want to do.
Yeah, that's a good spot for me as well.
And I do have.
Whatever works in the sentence.
You do have a typo on the bottom, page twenty four too.
Versus, okay.
I think, and I would tell you this, generally our goal is to use the, the title. And the position of the person without a pronoun, um, and so we would say. You know, the city manager and the city, as the city manager is designee instead of his or her designee, you know, we try to take it out um. Completely and use they grammatically correctly, only because we actually do in law, sometimes we'll have a plural. Uh, in a sing, and a singular in the same provision, and then it can get confusing, but we will. So I, I, if you guys are okay with it, I mean, I think in years past, it was first name the, name of the position, you know. And, and avoid pronouns and then use um, they if, uh, if, um. You know, if that's not something we can do, so you get that, all that inclusion in the pronoun. But we also really try to keep the sentence grammatically.
Does that work?
Thank you.
Just make sure there's no one there that is strictly his or him, okay? That will be good. Any of those, he or she.
He or she is right.
So delving it, are we ready to move into the sales tax? Yes, okay, um, so.
If, when you're trying to, give us a page number and then I can speak into golf and follow along with whatever section we're talking, thanks.
Okay, sounds good. I'll make sure I do that. And so really the sales tax code rewrite was to look at the exemptions and the definitions. And the way we talked about things, there were a lot of double negatives and passive provisions in the tax code that made it very hard to understand. We are trying to remove them. If I'm honest, I still think there's several to go. You know, like there are definitions that I'm still struggling with, uh, but by playing with the language, I understand them better. And understand them well enough to have a conversation with council and the staff about them, which truthfully I could not do. On first reading for some of them, because I don't think I was fully, I, I couldn't fully understand, you know, what I was reading. Now, I say that your code is completely lawful and your provisions are enforceable in every way, but this is something we need to do to make it. Um, as user friendly as possible. The other thing that we spent time on is looking at the remote sales tax uh code. And really looking at that code where it's landed and looking at Cordova's code. At one point, the Uniform Tax Commission uh requested that we refer only to the tax code by. Uh, reference, which I think is a great uh request, recommendation. The city followed that. We are one of the few um. That, that did that. Most still kept a separate uh tax code in their code. Um, but that's, there is some areas where that causes some contortion on either end, whichever direction you would do it. We really tried to clean that up, take the, the definitions that we could, put them in our code. So it was uniform and it mirrored one another, and there's not any concern regarding how we treat remote sellers versus how we treat local sellers. Um, the other uh thing we looked at um was, and probably one of the most important thing was, we looked at this Mac, the sense of like tax cap. That what we found is even in discussions at the council meeting, it's confusing. Some people felt, I mean, even understanding as a member or the public, what's being taxed and what's being exempted from tax. Can get confusing and really facing that um and naming it and saying, okay, we have maximum taxation. We put a cap on certain things. What does it look like for goods? What does it look like for services? What is a real, what is a transaction? And then starting to grapple finally with things like, what is the, how do we treat the resale of goods? And the use of raw materials that then becomes something else that is sold? How do we protect the person who's creating that good or reselling that good from paying tax on both sides of the transaction? Um, or rather paying tax when they buy it and then, um, and then the. Uh, consumer paying tax on the, you know, and they're remitting that tax on their behalf, you know, that can get on, uh, that has equity issues, right? And so looking at that, then looking at some of the exemptions and the intent, we are, um, we are dealing with. Uh, exemptions that benefit general purchasers of construction materials. Um, but we sort of ignore the difference between that purchaser and maybe the incentives council may have for giving them an exemption. And the resale identity of a contractor who is creating something, creating a new kitchen, creating a, a addition, you know. And so their um tax exemption. And the access to a refund under that exemption, that has a really important piece, because we are actually attempting to treat those contractors. Equitably like a reseller or something that maybe is a more traditional product that you resale, right? So those are, those are the big concepts that we're, we tried to tackle here. Some of the lighter concepts are purpose statements, making sure there's a line and near the uniform tax code. And also what we find in other communities, um, but most importantly, the uniform tax code, because they're telling us. That they are going to interpret their exemptions. that they are going to interpret their exemptions narrowly, that they that they are going to interpret their tax code to apply if there's any question, right? And that is um and that's what the state statute anticipates with taxation. But we are applying that now to our remote sellers. We need to apply it across the board. So those are those provisions. Um and so now, I think that what I thought I would do is check in with you guys regarding questions, because I think there's so much here. I could spend three hours walking you through every change I made. Um and those are the reasons for the change. I think that we really want to talk about the changes that impact people's pockets. Whether it's the city's pockets, where we have a budget impact, whether it's a industry's pocket or individual citizens' pocket. If that works well for council, that's sort of the approach I thought I'd take to this work session.
Thank you. Questions?
Um yeah, I had a question with the sales tax collection registration requirement on page thirty two. Is that whole thing new with the tax collection certificate? Because that that sounds very new and it seems like an excessive add to administration. If they're getting a business license, why now do they also have to get a certificate to collect tax from the city? That kind of ties into with the tax receipts and I can guarantee you that the city does not want every single grocery store receipt. And that's what it says in here that we need to provide, whether they're exempt or not exempt, every receipt for the sale has to be provided to the city. Those two things kind of made me nauseous.
Yes, which I understand. And yes, they are new. And no, they are not things we are married to. They are things I want the administration to think about, uh because they are done um pretty uh routinely in other communities. So what I expect in the next draft as we work through them is to the extent we have a registration process that it's incorporated into the business license process, but that you're getting the information that they may need or that approval for the collection of sales tax. The reason why they do that is we do have examples of people collecting sales tax and using it as a tool to steal money, right? So um making sure that that is not happening, making sure that you have a record, that is something that communities want to do. They want to be able to track and pay and and record that. Now, it could be something that based on your, so I had a discussion with Susan and I think that, you know, from her perspective too, your business license process may be adequate and you may not want to do a registration process. But I think that's a real discussion. We should just talk about it so that you have actually rejected it. You know what I mean? So that Cordova says and the administration, you know, kind of confirms when we come back, you know, they say, you know what, we do not need a registration process because we added a line to our business license that says, will you be charging sales? You know what I mean? Whatever that is. And that's enough for our community.
Feel like that those two things combined are almost punishing. It's punishment for folks paying sales tax. And I think it's not so much a big deal in this community, you know? People can, I mean, if there's an issue with sales tax, an audit can happen and that's where the receipts can be produced, you know, on the receipt side. And, you know, as a business member, you know, I I get a business license. I think a line on that business license and a little checkbox is about as good as it needs to get. A separate certificate just seems to be overkill for that. That's just my input.
I'd be curious to hear Susan's input on this.
Oh, well, I I mentioned the same thing as far as um having two separate certificates or whatever, but um I don't know how I filled up all the receipts, because I think if the city has all the receipts for every single business, then there will be equity. If every business is interpreting exemptions and everything else their own way for individual buyers in different ways, then that is where equity occurs. So it does sound onerous, but I mean, I don't know.
That just seems crazy to me to amount, to have to produce that amount of receipts in sales. I know, I mean, it's requiring receipts. For for my small business, I can, I have software that can print off a report that's two papers and give that as proof of income versus sales, but that's what I mean.
Yeah. No, and I, this provision is from Bethel and I and so the what I heard was that it works really well and it is not overly onerous. When I read through it, I think that it can, it's just an invoice. I don't think that the description and the details require, um you know, I I think that it requires a little bit less than um I'm hearing when I read it, but I do understand that, I mean, it does require receipts. It requires that they're dated, right? And it requires invoices to be produced. And so the question is, and I'll spin and we'll go through it and see if there is a middle ground, but I do just want you to know, this was not, this is not language that came from sort of a, you know, lawyer's uh dream provision or something on receipts, right? This is a, this is from uh, this is a working provision in a small community. That said, Bethel is not as small as Cordova, right? And they do have a lot of uh industries that we don't have. And so that might be one of the reasons too, that it works for them and it wouldn't necessarily work for Cordova. And we just have to figure out what will work for Cordova.
What's wrong with what we've got working right now, I guess, the question. I had a conversation with the manager of our local lumberyard and about this very issue yesterday. And he basically said that it was confusing for him. He sat down with city staff. City staff said, this is what we want. He's got it on a computer program. He showed me. He said, now it's real easy. Here's your list. Here's your name. Here's your tax ID. Boom. So even think with onerous the way it's set up now. So I'm not sure why we would change that. And that's something we need to get with the local business people. If they're happy with the system we have now, why why do you want to, to Wendy's point, add more to it?
And that lists exemptions only, whereas this lists all sales.
Exactly.
Not just exempted sales. I'm not saying exempted sales, that that shouldn't, that should be
Right.
You know, there should be record keeping on that. There should be proof on that. Um but this, the way this is written, it addresses all sales and that that
We need to change that.
It should.
All right, anything else on that?
Um I know a lot of people have brought up box tax. I don't, I think we're talking about small small, I just wanted to address it because I've been, it's been approached to me a lot. Um we can't do a box tax if we leave the exemptions the way they're set up because boxes are part of, on page thirty, the shipping and the fish shipments, that's part of that. So it's exempted in there. And realistically, you're targeting at this point, one business in town, if you're gonna do box taxes. Cause there's only one business that really sells boxes in town um at this point. And otherwise, you're gonna have to generate it at the sales level, which is AC or at the airport, which I know has been talked about before. And I seriously doubt that Alaska Airlines wants to get into the record keeping on box taxes. So I just wanted to address that, that right now, the way it's it's exempted in our thing, so people understand that's why we're not talking about a box. It's exempted, unless we want to change that.
So before we move on, I'm just, I have notes that I just took from the conversation regarding the administration pieces, you know, keeping it as simple as you can so long as it has accountability and efficiency. That's my note. Um and so when I work with staff, I think it'll be those looking at points of inefficiencies. Like if we do have a place where we're finding that we're not functioning or getting what we need to get in order to ensure that we are getting the revenue um that we are charging, especially with sales tax, when the risk is you have people remitting sales tax and that that remaining remitted tax not making it to the city, which has happened in the city before, which is a really difficult tax situation, right? It's it's different than someone not paying their tax. It's someone taking tax from someone else and choosing not to give it to the city for whatever reason. And sometimes it's not, it's not a nefarious reason. It's a business. Um it's a a business problem reason, you know, it's like they're struggling with their business or they're struggling with their
So I like this. I don't know when it's appropriate again to speak to the refund of constructing materials. Is that what we're speaking here now on that tax?
So yeah, we can, we can jump to that. So that was the administration. It sounds like we got, no one, are we done? Why don't we just
So quickly, because I disagree with the statements that were made at the last work session. Let me run down that really fast as far as if you're a contractor or that you're gonna build a home, you come in, you get a building permit, you pay your tax, your hundred eighty dollars upfront. That covers everything from from the contractor coming in to dig your water and sewer line in to the gravel that goes into the ditch to the leveling on the property, to the gravel, to level the property, to the cement, to the rebar, to the labor, to the framers, to the plumbers, to the electrician, to the drywallers, to the roofers, to the siders, everything is taxed exempt under that provision. Now, that's the way it's been for fifteen or twenty years. Now, now it's changing, so that's something that city council needs to take up and discuss. But also, getting back to five, two point five, the getting your taxes back. When we put this in, the intent was to help with the building process and keep costs down and it's a very successful program. But at that time, there was no Amazon. Anchorage did not charge tax. So now what you're finding is you're paying, you're buying stuff on Amazon and Anchorage and somebody's been paying or charging tax. We should not be refunding that. This should be what the intent was for local businesses only. So you should not be able to buy something from Anchorage and come down here and go, well, it's part of my project for the house, therefore I get my tax back. No, that's not, that was not the intent originally. So I don't know if we want to address that or if we can limit it to all purchases only legally. But that was the, that I find that troubling that we would give tax back somebody bucks on my Amazon, because we don't, we don't receive the hundred percent of that tax even. So what's your thoughts as far as that excluding non-local taxes paid?
Well, we can't really uh exclude non-local taxes paid in the sense that you know, we have a remote seller's tax and who pays tax pays, we can't differentiate between directly where someone bought it and where they, you know, whether they got it inside or outside. In that way, we have ways that we do that based on the tax or the exemption, but I think one of the things that so we can't differentiate our, between our brick and mortar and our remote sellers in that way. But we do it because truthfully, if there is a sales tax, so I think what it is, is we have a system and a refund application process that says you want the refund on this in its entirety. That is great. You need to show us that um you know, you pay taxes on this, because why would we give a refund of taxes not paid, right? So we want to refund the tax that they paid. That would be Cordova tax that was paid. So that, so I think the way, so this is the way I thought about it with the structure. There's a couple of things going on. One, there are contractors, licensed contractors who are in the business and that would include subcontractors, right? They're in the business of building um in Cordova. And a contractor under your code was included as a resale by definition, but it wasn't very clear. So a contractor under your code, everything you buy, i- if it's bought for a project, that then turns into something else, whether it's a house, kitchen, you know, whatever it might be. Um that's resale. So everything you pay, and like you said, it's not just three thousand dollars. Everything you pay should be subject to a refund or an exemption. But it's a lot easier to, so long as it's for that project, because that's your final project. That's your final product that you're creating. So all the service that goes into that product, all the, all the materials, all the construction materials, that that you are a reseller in that sense, you know, and and contractor. So while Silla has a great contractor exemption applications, two pages, it requires basically what we put in here. And the contractor can come at the end of the job and get, if there is um, you know, and there they can, they can apply for that exemption um that
Because the way it's, the way it's always worked here is and if I'm a, if I'm a contractor gonna supply a kitchen to a client, I would come in and I would, I would install that kitchen. And let's say it's a ten thousand dollar kitchen. I would give them a bill for ten thousand dollars with no tax added, because they have the building permit and the pre prepaid tax card. So no taxes were paid, so no taxes have to get taken back from the city or reimbursed. That's the way that's always worked. We don't charge the client taxes if they have the building permit and if they have that tax ID card. And then we could be yeah, it could be, you know, I could be building my own spec house or we could be building the house for a citizen. And the plumber is the same way. If you have your tax ID card, yes, all right, then they send you out a bill and they don't charge tax. That's the way that's been working for the last fifteen, twenty years, which it's worked really well.
Well, it works, but the question is, do you then have a tax exemption card or do you pay taxes as you purchase the materials?
Everything is tax exempt that goes into that house, only that house. I mean, that's, that's what they got the building permit for, others' house or whatever. As long as you have a building permit, is that single project, everybody from the dirt contractor to the finished contractor, when they build the homeowner, it's, there's no taxes charged.
So what we've done in that case, and and if Cordova wants to continue to do this, that's okay. But we are not just giving tax exemption for construction materials. We're giving tax exemption to contractors who are producing a service that includes building and or that includes plumbing or that includes includes any of those license and that's not in your code. So those exemptions that we are giving, we are not doing in compliance with your code. And I think the reason why we have these resale provisions and you see them in a lot of places is to make sure that if, that we are either giving the resaler, which a contractor is, right? The exemption on the front end or the back end, so that there's only tax paid once. And if Cordova wants to say, actually, we don't want to tax this at all. We want to incentivize housing. So we do not want to tax the construction or any products or goods that go into the construction of a residential house or something like that. We can build that. We can. It's unusual. I haven't seen it, but it doesn't mean we can't do it. Doesn't mean that Cordova can't do that. But it sounds like right now, and this kind of demonstrates what was intended through your taxation code isn't happening. And you have a charter provision that says we are going to do, we are going to tax what we say we're gonna tax by ordinance and we cannot deviate from that because I think your charter wanted to make sure you guys had money to operate, right? As a city. So we just need to, that's gonna have so that is something we can do, but we just need to say it. We need to be honest about what we're doing. Like, I'm not saying Cordova is not being honest, but I'm saying I think provisions get adopted, refund policies get adopted. And then what ends up happening is our 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 tax scheme is a kind of difficult to um identify. So we want to identify it. So I think that would be a question for council. So the way it's written here, there's another question too, is do we want, is, does the city of Cordova want to make sure that they have, that they're providing every purchaser with construction materials and um an exemption for construction materials and equipment? Um or do they want to limit that to contractors? Because right now, we have sort of both. We say it both ways in the code. And one is really based on the contractor's role as a resale. The other one is a policy-based exemption, I'm going to call them. Okay, they're just, Cordova, I think at one point was sort of saying, hey, you know, whether you're a contractor, you're just an individual, we want you to have a tax exemption for um drywall, cause you know, it's expensive to build here. So I think that's a question that council, you know, is gonna wanna think about.
Right. Want to incentivize, incentivize building single family homes? You keep what, when we're doing it, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I don't want to see us change the construction materials from the way we're doing it right now. I think it works great the way we're doing it right now. It's worked as intended and on one part of this rewrite, we're trying to incentivize development. On the other hand, we're making it harder. And we're making it more convoluted for the builders and for the customers that they build for. So I I like to see us stick with the building process as it is. It's worked great. And uh, yeah, I don't really support this refund for construction materials and services clause.
So you're just talking about getting rid of that, because it's amusing.
Yeah, well, it is confusing and and a city plan is probably gonna argue that that's not the way it goes written. I I won't disagree with that. Um but the intent Um, but the intent, I would say when this was all walked forward, I was on council, but this was the intent. To help out when we're building a home, to keep our costs low, because we all, we said it here, is once you get a home built, I mean, but in uh. Property taxes, so that was the intent. Does our code say that or the way it's written? I'm not sure, but I think council needs to have a discussion, and if it's not, we need to clarify it and keep moving on with the way we, we're doing business now.
Um, you, uh, you're right in my mind. Um, I was gonna say that, yeah, I believe that that may be the intent. And it may be at times how it's been interpreted, but there is language in the existing code that talks about how the exemption is for is permanent parts of the structure. And so if you take that to literal interpretation, I mean, you're not getting an exemption for that kitchen that you put in, because those cabinets aren't a permanent part of the house. Um, you know, those things can be taken out and replaced, you know, we're talking structural components when you're making permanent parts of it. But, and so I'm not saying that it shouldn't include the kitchen. Uh, I think one thing that, you know, myself and you and the finest part would like is, let's get that clarity into the code, so there is no question about it. If we want to include the groundwork, then let's say that. If we want to include the finished work, all of that stuff, then let's just, let's make sure that we're, we have full clarity on that.
Well, I, I tell you from experience, it's one of the biggest incentives, I can't say the name word, incentivized. The build, I've used this product and all the concepts that I have, they love it. The first thing I ask you, do you have your building permit? Do you have your code or your tax ID and we're off the races, so it works well.
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna just reiterate what Kevin's saying is, that is not what your code says, and so let's make it say that. If that is what council wants, that's the whole point of this rewrite, right? But it does not say that now, so we need to, we need to make sure that if you wanna have that exemption. Go to the, and that, you know, so we will change it and draft it that way going forward. But the other thing too is we will talk to the administration, make sure we understand if that has any cost. If everyone's been doing it that way, maybe it won't have a, a financial impact too, but it's something that, you know, we'll make sure that you have those tools. With administration's help, uh, very much so on that one.
Um, so going to this fee that's associated with, where, where did that number come from? Is that in code, the one hundred? And that's, so you're, you're, you're paying. Thank you, that's, that's what I'm trying to get, at a basic level, we're spending ten thousand dollars, that's, we're saying, hey, we're gonna give you a break at six hundred dollars. At our expense for a hundred eighty dollars, and that's pretty much the basic level. And then, if you're gonna get a building permit, I mean, you're doing something ten thousand dollars or way more. And we're saying for a hundred eighty dollars, this is, yeah, we're shooting ourselves in the foot at least. So, that, a separate conversation, but if it's in code and we're talking about code, and I wanna make sure we're addressing that as part of code, that that fee, whatever. The new amount might be, uh, if it was three thousand, it'd mean it'd go to ten thousand, and we're talking that.
Well, and then real quickly, early discussion was also, this was an incentive for people to come get building permits.
Sure.
Cuz a lot of work goes on without permits over the years. And, and the plus side of that to the city of Iowa is maintained, is now you have a record that you know, they've, even if the, a lot's been approved, they have built on it. That lot just went from a thirty thousand dollar lot to a sixty thousand dollar lot, you have the building, maybe told it, it should go to your assessor, and it should get picked up. So those things help us with our tax revenue too, keeps us, well, what's going on with the city.
Absolutely, I agree with that, it's still, I'm not saying it shouldn't be an incentive, but uh, it, it seems unbalanced at a hundred eighty dollars. It's way more incentive.
We'll have that discussion later.
And I'm saying that for someone who's taking advantage of that as well.
Yeah, but you understand too that that's not, that's across the board. So yes, that's insignificant in construction, but in different lines of business, the three thousand dollars is, you know. Useful, very useful for local businesses. So if you're gonna change that number, be careful that you don't change it across our board and raise that.
It is drawn ordinance, it is broken out into the different types of businesses. So if you change it in this section, it wouldn't necessarily affect like the charter or things like that.
Yeah, okay.
You have to change it in the other sections as well.
Okay, well, I think we're, I think that's something, go ahead.
Oh, I actually have something on another partner on every page.
Yeah, I was gonna close out that part, I think we're, council needs to take that up in another meeting, I think, okay. Go ahead.
Um, so on page twenty nine, uh, we talked about it in the last meeting, but it looks like I got maybe uh, this, there's a lot to digest here, so. But miss, um, subsection C, the transportation, the charters, proceeds from air transportation. Uh, including that portion of any charter fishing or hunting expedition, which covers the cost of transportation is exempt. I thought we talked about maybe uh, getting rid of that exemption. Um, so it treats the air charters the same as the water charters they're currently treated.
We didn't.
So I just wanted to point that out, or you know, you could have water charters, so I love that.
I think.
Um, I think, then we have agreement. Alright, so that is, uh, that is where we wanna go with that, Holly, if you can make notes of that, I think you wanna make that the same.
Yeah, well, just on that one, hold on one second, only because, so we have a, the air charter limitation. That's expressed in here is based on state statute and federal, uh, uh, the federal law. So I just wanna make sure I, I'm not misunderstanding. So um, I can, so this is the proceeds from the air transportation. Including the portions of any chartered fishing or hunting expedition, which covers the cost of air transportation is exempt. But if the, but the portions of a sale that are charges for recreational flight seeing or air-water shore excursion travel. So I thought, did I mess that up? My goal was to make sure that we stayed, we mirrored the language in Title twenty nine and the other communities as much as possible. And this is, you know, directly taken from, uh, there are two of the other communities that have sort of tried to go this direction. Um, but got that air-water shore excursion travel, so that everybody is not exempt. But did I do that wrong? If I did, we can take it at, you know, we can, we really can't, we have to be really careful with the air transportation piece. Only because of the, um, the federal limitation. But I was trying to be, I was trying to reflect your, your comments here as a body, so if I missed it.
But working in the, the charter originating from city of Cordova. I mean, I realize you can't tax somebody that left Seattle, left airlines, but if somebody comes over here and takes a flight scene trip that originates out of Cordova. Seems like we should be able to tax that, no?
We can, yeah, I mean, I think that um, we are. So we are taxing the recreational flight seeing. Or air-water shore excursion travel or adventure. So when you leave from Cordova and you come back to Cordova and you're going out to see something, we can tax that if you're transporting um, as the main. That's the main impetus or purpose of the transportation, which often just by its nature is gonna be into and then out of, right? Even if it's just into and out of, over, you know, I'll, just. Not to another municipality or jurisdiction, we need to be, we can't get sideways on the statute with that one or the state. And we might get more, I'm sorry, or the federal um, laws. But we might get more direction on this eventually, now that we have people trying to, we're actually reading the law. And hopefully, this is an interpretation of it, and that, I think this is somewhat new in the last, I wanna say like three years. So maybe eventually there'll be even greater insight or an IRC ruling on what the feds, you know, will let us do. But right now, what this does is basically if you're incorporating a flight seeing. Or a uh excursion, um, whether it's on a boat or whether it's in the air into your business. Then we aren't, that is not exempt, because that product is not for transportation, so it couldn't.
This is what happens, is people come to town, then they go down here, local air charter business. And say, I wanna be flown out to Boswell Bay to go deer hunting, now it's Forest Service cabin. They fly them out there, they pick them up, can that be taxed?
If they are flying from, uh, from inside to outside, then that part, that ticket for their airfare is exempt. If they say, we're gonna take you out to go bear watching, we're gonna fly into where we're gonna go bear watching, we're gonna watch some bears. And then we're gonna fly back, that purpose is to watch those bears. And so, uh, I don't know the idea that, so I think there is a difference, and this is what we don't know yet. Which is why we have parameters that say unless otherwise exempted by you, by AS twenty nine forty five, right? We're going to learn what the parameters are, but the way we're interpreting them now is we know commercial flights are protected. And we know that they've said that charges for recreational flight seeing or air-water shore excursion travel or adventure travel. Is taxable, so we're going to make that determination, and this code provision lets us do that.
Yeah, so you're based, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but you're saying basically that fishing and hunting is, is not recreational. Cuz that's what, that's what this is saying, but fishing, like our charters.
Right. Somebody off, yeah.
So how he designate?
So it's, it's transport.
It's.
You're transporting someone, that's what it calls on.
Whether you stay in that location overnight or anything like that, and then it's transportation, like it's.
So if we can separate it out, so for example, if you do everything all in one. You get on a boat, you take somebody fishing, you take them out there, you show them, then you come back, and that's the excursion and they pay X amount, right? Let's say they have a ticket, they get on a charter to get to Cordova to do that, right? And then they, that is, that, that flight, we can separate it out, that's exempt. If you as a charter program go get them and bring them back, right? To go fishing, and then you charge them X amount for the flight. Because some people coming and, and doing that particular adventure, some of them fly in, some of them take the ferry. So you've separated out, it's two hundred dollars for the flight, then they get on a boat and they do that, the flight's exempt. You charge somebody three thousand dollars to take them on a fishing excursion. They maybe stay in the lodge, or they do this, or they do that, and part of that included in that is that, that charter and that transportation for that. For that excursion, it is not exempt. Because it is not separated out, they couldn't just buy the transportation piece, you're not just charging them for the transportation piece. So the reading of the US code is that that falls outside the trans, the commercial airline or flight language. That we are preempted in the state of Alaska or elsewhere from taxing. I, I know it's confusing, I am not saying it's not confusing, the US code is confusing, we, but this is a, our best attempt. And I, we talked to colleagues who, they have also done their best attempt, so far this is the best we can do. To really make sure that we are not getting, uh, we're not getting sideways of federal law. Or state law, and we have a provision that we can enforce, and I can work on the language so it's cleaner. But the thing is, the problem is, our language is designed, and that's why it kind of has that as otherwise exempted by AS twenty nine forty five. It's, it's designed to allow this.
We got forty minutes left, um, so we wanna move this forward, and it sounds like you're stuck on that one.
Well, I mean, obviously I harbor with this one, because they're all my direct competitors, and I pay tax and they don't. So uh, yeah, it's uh, is what.
Your clients pay tax, you just collect any of it.
I don't add it on. I do not add it on to my.
But that is the truth.
So is there, what's the next thing on anybody's? Discussion list?
Council member Bailey, just really quick, I just wanna get clarity on that one, because it does apply to air-water and shore excursion travel for the adventure. I just wanna make sure that that component complies with what council was thinking that last round. I just wanna make, because I'm just sort of making notes on ones I'm revisiting, does that, can I sort of get a head nod on that piece?
Yeah, well, if we, I think the bottom line is, if we can, we can figure out a way to charge tax on the air component, that we want to do that.
But, yeah, I just want us to be fair.
Right.
For everybody, but if you tell us you can't legally do it.
But it, that, it have air in here, that's why, I just wanna make sure you guys see that piece.
Right.
Does include air, it just doesn't include air, you know, when it's a separate expense. It's billed out just for the travel too, does that help, or is that just really not?
So let me ask this question again, it's similar to Tom's. So I'm gonna go hire Ridgeline Aviation to fly me out to Point Cabin, I'm not gonna go deer hunting, I'm just gonna spend three days there. Do I pay, does, is he charging me tax for that or not?
Did you just buy an airplane ticket and that is it?
I bought a trip, round trip out and back for four people.
He didn't, he, he's just selling you the airline ticket, he's not giving you the lodge, he didn't, he's, there's nothing into that. Yeah, okay, so you, he, he is exempt, that flight is exempt, that is just a flight.
And it doesn't matter if you go fishing there, or you go sightseeing there, or doesn't matter what you do there.
Fall off the beaver down. He's not providing.
Exactly, he's not providing an additional service, he's exempt, he is transporting you. That's all he's, he's not promised you an excursion or a good time, any of those things.
Have we said, is, what about heli skiing?
What is what? What about what?
Heli skiing.
Well, I would think that heli skiing would be not exempt. Because.
Even if, even the part of it that's transportation, like what if they piecemeal it? What if they call the transportation ten thousand dollars and the skiing part is a dollar?
Well, then there's gonna be questions too, I mean, there is an audit process, right? Like, so the question is, how much does it cost a helicopter? And this is, I think, one of the things, right? Like, what is the cost of dropping, heading the helicopter in a particular place? But how is it put there? Is it part of what they're offering? Is it part of the skiing, what's on board, you know, what are the, you know, right?
It's a package, and so it should not fall, it currently is under transportation, cuz they're not transporting it. Part of, you pay said amount in one package fee, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars. To include your lodging, to include your transportation, but it's in a package up and down the hill. And so that should be non-exempt, if I'm understanding what you're saying.
Right. Understanding too, it's, it's built in, the hours in the helicopter are built into their package, it's not separated out as transport.
No, they're, they're, they're not necessarily paying for them, part of the package isn't them getting from Minnesota up to Cordova. That's separate, and that would be exempt, that piece of it. But their, but their bulk package is including helicopter ride up to the top of a mountain and back down.
Correct, well done.
I have no idea. And then how does the vent tax? Cuz you got sales tax and vent tax, because they have, they have an under thirty day stay. So are they collecting the twelve?
I thought our code said it is.
For, for bed tax? And so they're five days, five day packages, so they need to be collecting the bed tax. I don't know that they do, I just got from that question.
Well, that's another one to mark down.
So, yeah, I guess the other question I would have, so you've answered, uh, council member Sherman's question about. If the charter air transport out to a Forest Service cabin, it's exempt. So what if the same, same person chartered a boat out to Forest Service cabin back?
It wouldn't be exempt.
Wouldn't be exempt, so that's my.
Yep, no, and so I think with that one, it's not so much that we include air in the exemption. I mean, that we include air in taxation, you know, it's, the question is, would you want? Because we are, we are regulated by outside laws, right? What we can do with the air transport beyond what we did, um, the question is, would you wanna exempt? Um, uh, charter vessels, you know? And, and then figuring out, and so for ones like that, where we're gonna go somewhere we haven't gone, you know, just make sure. I think one of the things I would recommend is we really need to figure out the cost, because what I, I would hate is for you guys to do all of these changes. And on sales tax, you know, that, that might impact the revenue, and for the council to make decisions. That then got your budget right before budget, so you know what I mean, at least know it. I mean, if, if you guys wanna do that, wherever you wanna do that, of course, you know, that's your prerogative, but I wanna make sure that. Would, you're aware of what the consequences are for each thing, and then can pick from the, from them. Alright, so, so far what I really have, I mean, I think the, the most important ones is. It sounds like we want to exempt everything regarding building a house. Um, and so I'm gonna work with Kevin on that and make sure we understand the cost of that and see what's been done. And so maybe there's no fiscal impact, but bring that back to council, cuz that is different than what your code says, so we're gonna fix that one. Um, I think the charter provision ones, um, I think that it reflects the law, I'm gonna read it again, and. Um, I think the charter provision ones, um, I think that it reflects the law, I'm gonna read it again and. See if there's any way I can get it clear, I think one of the things we might need is just really information for the public, like. What does this mean, if I flew here, you know, a lot of the questions you were asking, just make sure we have FAQs that have those questions, so when the public asks those two. They can get direction, um, I think I have the administration, um, guidance, so the next thing, um, one of the things that. You'll see is we didn't really change many of your exemptions, we just reclassified, we reorganized them. To put them all together so that it's easier to find them, um. So that was the real focus, I think, is wholesale resale, separating that out so that discussion is understood. Um, and it sounds like, you know, we have some work to do on that one to get it where you guys want it to go. The other piece is talking about the maximum, the imposition rate and the maximum tax, so. When I look at imposition rate, I took out the surtax, I don't think most people know what a surtax is, if I'm honest, I don't think they know what it is. And I think most lawyers don't know what a surtax is, and I don't think that, um. That is very helpful, people are trying to figure out their taxation rate, so I think putting in a, just a flat, like putting in the rates that you have. Uh, that you have charged and authorized by ordinance is best. Um, and so that is the only difference, there's no change in rates there, um, it's just. Putting them all in a section so people can see what they're being charged. Does anybody have any issues with the way that we restructured that, do they, I mean, I know it's a little bit different seeing the surtax tax out of there.
I'm sorry, yes, um, I'm, uh, also gonna just represent the finance department while I'm here, just because I know these are some questions that they have. Consistently and I'm not sure that's been, um, completely addressed, uh, the council brought it to. Uh, like on page twenty eight, when we're talking about the maximum tax per transaction, uh, I can see he's talking about the rentals. Uh, rents rentals over multiple months, um, I think this does clear it up more than it did previously, but. One thing that I don't know if it addresses or it needs to is, um, does this, uh, count for blocks of rooms? Or is it say per room cap, you know, so if you're renting one room over multiple months. As opposed to like contractor comes in and they get a rental agreement that's for ten rooms. And so they're only paying three thousand dollars on tax instead of three thousand on each room.
I think we need to add that clarity, you know, I like that, I like adding that clarity, so. I think the intention is per room, but, uh, Kevin, I'm gonna add that and I, do you guys wanna switch over to the maximum tax per transaction? Cause that might be a good segue and I, there's some comments and conversations, so I think we can have on each one of these.
Just second, we got a comment.
I was just gonna say I agree that it should be per room.
Lot of heads waving yes here for room.
Yes, per room, alright, got it. And so one of the things with the maximum tax per transaction before, this is where this is really pulled from your tax cap language, which was not clear. And the inner, and it really did not provide a lot of, um, direction. Uh, you have a term, single purchase transaction in your code, it's unclear, it's unclear how to apply it, um, it's unclear what it. Applies to how you really decide what a transaction is, when a one transaction becomes two. The language that I added was to try to do that, both in the rental realm and the property realm. One of the things I would say is, especially if you're going to exempt all of the. Purchases for construction materials, you know, and the, all of the services associated with that. The single transaction appeared to me to be based on a single item. Right? The goal was to make it so that you were only paying tax on the first three thousand dollars of an engine. Or the first three thousand dollars of a boat. Or, you know, and instead it was written in a way that suggested that it was a transaction. So every time you went to the, like any store, if everything was for sort of one thing, then you could maybe argue that that transaction. That it was only the first three thousand dollars of that transaction, that becomes very difficult to uniformly enforce. So that is a question for council, uh, I think the intent was to say a single purchase transaction, meaning a single good. You know, one item, just like the, the rental or service was trying to get out to, to a single service provided, right? So ideally you would change that to a good or item and move away from the transaction language. Um, but I wanted you to see, I wanted to preserve it because I think that actually. Um, I just want, I really wanted counsel to discuss it, so we don't do anything that's outside what your intent is or.
So, you know, I believe that the intent was to be the transaction, not the item. Because when this really came into play was on building materials and we've already exempted them with the. Building permit process, but you know, you're not gonna have a house packages. Made up of twenty thousand items, you've got nails, screws, tin, wood, windows, so I don't think it was ever intended to be. On one item, um. I can see where we might want to add some clarification where it's not add it all up throughout the entire month. And then your invoice at the end of the month when you have an account at a store, you know, I I can, I can see where we, we need to clean that up a little bit. I think it's a single transaction on that day. Cause you know, if you go to single items, it's like, well, every unit of gasoline, I guess, is its own item, right, every gallon, so. With, I, yeah, I think it should be single day transaction. Um, or if you have like an adventure contract, that is one contract. If you have a building package, that's a building package, it's a swipe your card once, but it's not. Let my account rack up the AC and I go in seven different times and fill up seven different carts of groceries and at the end of the month, they only charged me a hundred and eighty bucks. That's not the intention, so I guess that's how I interpret it and would like to see us move forward.
Transaction over item.
You have a single day transaction, like, you gotta buy it, like, when you go to the store and you have twenty items in your cart. And they're each ten thousand dollar items, if you swipe your card, you know, yeah, you hit the tax gap, but. That, that's just the way I look at it anyway, um, I don't want to see it where I think some of the stores in town have been doing it. You let that up for a whole month, that's not the intention.
And then for like Cordova out there, you know, they came to us and said, look, when we sell an engine, if it's. If we got the six percent on thirty five thousand, that's not thirty five thousand, three times a half, that would would not make us competitive, so we said, alright, so you. You're gonna have a tax cap max of three thousand dollars, so that kept them competitive in Cordova. Which was something that we wanted to do, that would be like an engine, but playing to your point, how they come in next week and bought oil or they bought this or bought that, that really shouldn't. Fall underneath that.
And so my, I just, one question, the sale of con- construction materials, a three thousand dollar cap on those in the code. That there was a three thousand dollar cap on the sale of construction materials, I I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because I feel like. Wouldn't that be the cap to make sure the transactions regarding construction are getting that exemption? And we preserved that one, so I just. So are you, are you guys saying you don't, you don't want it to be just an item or a good, you want it to be, you can go in and buy like twenty different items? Um, that together equal three thousand dollars or equal more than three thousand dollars and apply the cap to those items? Because of the construction material, because that one still does allow that one, but we want to do it in addition to it.
Separate out construction part, I think you have to separate out the home building aspect and if we're talking about incentive to build homes. That's almost an outlier and and maybe we, council needs to address that, but I think what most of us are speaking of is, is point is. People at grocery store make, you know, make purchases every day for thirty days and then you get a bill for four thousand dollars, you're not gonna pay. You can, then you met your cap, that's not the intent, it was, it was like if you went in and bought a, a marine engine and cost fifty thousand dollars. Then you got your cap. Councilman Jones.
So I guess, um, yeah, maybe I confused it when I started talking about building materials a little bit, but I guess what I was thinking about was. Uh, you know, not just the housing packages, but also when you have a contractor that's building something in town like a boat or a net. Or something like that, you know, you've, uh. Um, if you're charging every single piece of that net, the flying, the needles, the knives, the web, you know, that's. That I I feel like you need to have just be when, when you go in, pay your six grand at LFS for your net, that's it, but. They don't charge all the pieces that it took to build that net, um, because when you get your invoice wrong, they have items, per item, there's seven items to go. About one net, you know, um. Yeah, I, I like keeping it as, you know, transaction, but I do think we need to add clarification. So that it's not monthly transactions.
So how do you feel about changing it to good or item, but then clarifying that? You know, I don't, objects that come together, because I don't think using transaction is getting the city, like, I don't think it's. Working, it's really hard to limit it, but I think if we start with good or item, we can make sure that that net and all of the things that build the net. Become part of that item, you know, if you're building, if you're buying every piece and component that you need to create an engine. What you're really saying, which I think is good, what you're saying is, we want to treat the consumer who's building something. For the reuse, right, or like the creator creating something, we want them to only. We're gonna give them the tax benefit as if the engine was already built, or as if the net was already created, because it would have cost more than three thousand dollars. So even though it wasn't. Create, it didn't exist at the time, they bought all the pieces to bring it into, to make something. That would have gotten the exemption if it, they had bought it manufactured. Is that sort of what you're saying?
Well, we've had the opposite, so let me just tell you how confused the business owner circle into it. And how easy that is to abuse, I mean, there's no way, it would be so easy to walk into. LFS and order a whole bunch of things and act like it all went into your net. I I mean, if you tell the person at the counter that, they might put that at, oh, Kathy went three thousand. And you walked away with six nets worth of stuff, possible. When you had it different way and it's going to be difficult to retrain and it's going to be. Easy to abuse or or just do incorrectly. So I don't, I don't know.
I guess, one question I would have then is if you're gonna change it to an item. Say you're buying a multi-day adventure van, I've talked way too much about my own business tonight, but. Are you charging each person for each day at that point, or is it still just one contract, if somebody's going heli skiing per week? Right, is that one transaction, or is that gonna be each item is each flight, I mean, I guess flights are exempted. Each item is each hotel room and, you know, I can see where it could get complicated, like right now, my adventure package is, I charge a hundred and eighty bucks. For the week, one contract to one party member. And then I prevent my hundred and eighty dollars to the city. The, you know, if we change this to each item, am I supposed to charge each person? A hundred and eighty dollars, and is it a hundred and eighty dollars per day for all seven days they're here? You know, it seems like that would price me out of the market pretty quick, and so, um, yeah. I, I would like to see it be kept on per transaction.
And you know what, I think we may have accidentally or maybe into, we have a good medium on this, because services are transaction. So that might be one of the things too that were, you know, that were, so services are transaction. So it's because that's how a service work, just like you said, you're right, like, it wouldn't make sense to try to break those down or bifurcate them. And all we did with transactions and rentals is sort of add clarity about what happens if a specific service. Lasts more than a month, you know, so I think that marries what council member Baylor's saying, which is you get an engine. You get the tax, you know, the tax cap applies, you're only paying on three thousand dollars, and what you're saying, which is also, you know, which is, hey. This is, you know, the, this is a package deal and we're gonna break it down, it's gotta be transaction, so I think we are doing transaction for services. We just want to make the, uh, maximum tax for goods reflect. The language and because that's single purchase transaction, which I think was intended to get to the concept of goods or item, right? A thing, doesn't, that's all, and so, but we preserved the service, so if. Does that work for council with that sort of clarifying that language just for the good or item, but keeping that language regarding transaction for the service?
Well, answer her question for her.
I think, so what you're, so that would address somebody going to the grocery store and buying food for their trip. Or food for the restaurant or whatever, they can't. Are you saying that they have to spend three thousand dollars in one? Time before they get the cap?
Well, if they're a restaurant, don't they already have a example?
Yeah, and not for a restaurant, but for a boat fill up, say, yeah, that that's saying that if you go one time and you spend thirty five hundred at AC. You only pay tax on the three thousand, that's never been done to this day. So we're changing, if we change that, that's a loss of sales tax revenue to the city.
What do you mean, it's never been done?
That has not been done this way now, the, the grocery stores don't think if they go over three thousand, they owe one. Because it's per item right now, it's, that's what we've been telling people.
Well, we're, we're not. Not that big of a, that diverse of businesses unless, they fishing business, I mean, could we define? We know that you want the cap on, on engines, we know you want the cap on nets, could we define the things? That we want to provide a cap for for commercial and this, I mean, if somebody's gonna buy three thousand dollars worth of flying, I mean. You know, they pay, pay the tax, but engines, nets, you you tell me, I don't know what else goes in fishing, couldn't we even define that, even lift it? And say, these are the things that are eligible for tax gap, I mean, couldn't we get down to council, couldn't we get down to the gritty on that and just give clear. Clarification staff, these are the things that fall under this tax gap, we know building materials do. That's easy to find, you know, I can give you a list of that, we can list marine things, I don't know what else, we can, we can list your trips, I mean, if you're having a charter. You have, you know, we can answer all these questions, so there isn't any questions.
Well, the other, I guess the other, the last one that I was gonna bring up is just fuel, I mean, if you're going per item, and what is an item of fuel? Is it just, cause when you, when you get your receipt from Shoreside, it says quantity and that's, you know, it's like six hundred and ninety nine items, when you buy six hundred and ninety nine gallons.
So we can define that.
And CEC does not use the cap.
Right.
On electricity, so is a, a units of electricity different from gallons of fuel? But Shoreside does use the cap, so, which is right.
Yeah.
And how much detail do we have to get in here, is that something that can be done?
At a procedure level.
In a procedure level, instead of mapping that out here, so that it, we're not locked into it.
But to what is on here is the amount of money, and I feel like this is not. To say that three thousand dollars for any of these caps is, is appropriate, the way times are going. With inflation, if we're keeping up, that's, I, and I don't know what the right number is, but I can tell you however long three thousand dollars is, three thousand dollars is not the same it was even last year.
No.
And so I, I feel like if we're in a position where we want revenue. And I will all day be a proponent of user tax, if you're going to do or buy or get a service. You pay the tax on it, and I'd rather see that, I'd rather pay that tax than a blanket tax, which is property tax going in. So if there's another way that we can get creative to raise taxes on users, not everyone has to use these items, some people do.
Right.
But not everyone does. So that's my two cents, again, I don't know what the new cap should be, and I'm open to a discussion, but I feel like if that is in code and this is our time to visit it. I think we'd be doing a pretty big disservice to the community if we don't have a conversation about what that new cap should be.
Sure, what Wendy said, uh, then Holly, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you have, you're going to have specific exemptions, they do have to be codified. Based on city charter, I think is what she said, that the charter ordinance has to spell out what the exemptions are, you can't have a. Code that says they'll allow exemptions and then a separate policy document that staff goes off of, is that correct, Holly?
That is correct, well said. So there are a few things I do wanna, just jumping off and wait, everything you guys just said, I'm gonna lead, I'm gonna, I, so. The title is maximum top tax on a single sale of goods, that went to the good or item, because that's what the city does now. Given that there's a construction materials maximum tax, so that all those construction materials are wrapped into that maximum tax, that still applies, I did not take that out. Because that goes to contractors and purchasers, right, so I preserved that and I. So I preserved that and I didn't change it. Uh but given that and given that services and rentals are dealt with in our transaction basis, I'm going to change that term for the next, unless you tell me as a body. I'm, I'm sort of as a body, I'm hearing that we, I'm gonna change it back to what it is, so it reflects what we're taxing now on goods and items. Um so it's just going to, what we're going to do is define, we're gonna move the definition to a place where talking about the sale price of an item. And we're going to define item and we will give examples and like an engine and a, and you know, and that gives some discretion and flexibility when there's something we didn't think about, you know, some, some kind of net or some large object we didn't think about. And it allows council to give us some really good examples of what to put in that definition, but maybe that'll move us closer. So that's one. So I'll pause and just see, does that work for council for this next draft?
And I just wanna clarify based off that comment, Holly. So we're, we're saying for construction, it's actually kind of covered twice in here. We have one building permit, you have that process. And then are we saying this construction material, we go and buy a single item now at over three thousand dollars? That's how it's written now. If I go and buy a door and doors are very expensive and that's what I want. I want a door. It's over three thousand dollars. I'm only getting a tax at three thousand dollars and that's independent from my or e- even separate. I, this isn't even necessarily tied to my big house project that I'm doing. That, I, I guess I'm confused on why, why is it in here twice? Maybe that's the question. Why do we have something spelled out for construction materials maximum tax? And then, cause it already calls out there that you need a, a building permit before you can qualify for that. And then down farther, we're saying, and spelling out more of what the construction is, and that's what we spent thirty minutes earlier in this conversation. Okay, uh this night talking about. So is it in there twice and is it redundant, Holly?
I tried, it's a good question. I really tried to eliminate the redundancy and understand why it was in there in the way it was, which was in there. Actually, a total of sort of three times, if you look at a particular item, right? So this is what I determined, I think, um and I tried to remove the redundancy. So one, construction materials, um when, with the building permit, you are actually looking at the, so it's a greater definition of what's gonna be included in that three thousand dollars when you're looking at what is the transaction. So the city is gonna get a bill, um or they're going to lose the tax and sort of everything that goes into um building that structure except, until you get to something that's not part of the permanent structure, like a dishwasher. At least that, we left a lot of debate for what is part, right? Is it, and as Kevin said, is it is a cabinet permanent? And this position would be no, but there, that does create a lot of confusion. So that's one, that's your construction materials. It was, we wanna get, we want people to get building permits. We're gonna let, we're gonna give them a tax break on and every, on everything. And maybe in part two, we wanna encourage them to purchase those construction materials within the city. Um as opposed to outside where there is not a sales tax, right? So those are the, that's what I think the, that piece was. The three thousand dollar cap, I really believe the city's intent was to make that per item, like for a item. They just used language that made that hard to understand. And I think the three thousand dollar cap, at least for goods, was supposed to be, you are buying something big. It costs a lot of money. You're gonna pay tax on the first three thousand, but if you had to pay tax on the first ten thousand on that item. Argue at this time, I think the argument was, then maybe you don't buy the item, right? Like that's gonna be, at, at least when the three thousand dollar cap was put into place, which was, you know, decades ago, right? Like that would be a problem. If you, so that's what council's really thinking about. What would make a person not buy an engine in Cordova? Right? Like is the, how much of si- of the sales tax, where is that dollar amount? Where you would get on a plane or pay for shipping or go do something to get it from somewhere else? And I think that's the, the analysis of the policymaker on that. And I think that was an item. And I think that um the language was wrong, so we wanna correct the language. On uh the other piece for construction is really looking at a contractor who is acting as a reseller. They built, they bought a bunch of stuff and they paid sales tax on that stuff. And then they made something and then they sold that thing they made, which is their kitchen or their house. And that buyer paid sales tax on that. And that is seen as, um that is not an equitable right? It's sort of double taxation, taxing two different you're, so I think it's lawful, but it's sort of seen as inequitable. So a lot of communities have a resale exemption or a manufacturer exemption, with a manufacturer exemption we need under state law, but it's the, for the same reason. You know, we don't want them to have to pay tax on both sides, but what Cordova has done, I'm, I'm really what I learned today is that Cordova says you don't have to pay on either side. You know, we're exempting you completely from tax, which is not what your code says, but that's something that you guys are exploring. So that is, so I will, I can back out those other provisions. Cordova won't charge tax to people, um like either getting construction materials or and if that's the direction we go and we apply that to a purchaser, not just a contractor, then this, the exemption would come out. So I mean, that's sort of, so I'm still playing with that, but that's the, the really complicated answer to your question. Is we don't, we're not redundant in the dra- draft in front of you. But we will have to deal with a redundancy if we take all of the um, you know, the other stuff out, which I think we can do. I, I'm just gonna have to figure out how to do that, but well, I will before the next draft.
Hey, thank you, Chris Jones.
So totally different topic, um on page point six. The transit logging, I was only understanding that we were at seven days before and that now it's at thirty. Was that on purpose?
Where does it say seven days?
In the current code.
Can you repeat that? You kinda, I'm sorry, I kinda lost you for a minute.
Just in the transit logging services or public accommodation services, um I was, on page point six, it looks like we're moving to thirty consecutive days for length of that pass. Um maybe I'm misunderstanding what the current code said. I was told by a member of the community that it said seven currently. And she was adamant about going to thirty and so, um this says thirty, I am good with thirty. I just wanted to make sure that that was what everybody on the table wanted to do.
I don't understand. Less than thirty days, you use the surtax.
You use the bed tax, but in my current, it says less than seven days is what I was made to.
Okay.
I didn't.
I don't know if it does. I think it's been thirty.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Has it been thirty or wasn't it set on?
I think we have concurrents at one thirty, correct?
I think.
We're gonna begin with thirty or move to thirty.
And I agree.
I did not intentionally change that, just so you know. So I'm pretty sure that.
Okay. We have to have a quick rundown here. We're running on time. Any, anything else we wanna touch on real quick?
Well, it sounds like there's a point of, uh, maybe clarity for our community. Some people are thinking seven and thirty is something we can do to get to thirty. Let them know.
I think it's thirty. Yeah, that will, and we'll confirm. And then the only other thing is, there was some discussion about the tax cap. And I think that's a really, really important discussion to have, just as a, a point of consideration.
Yeah.
Uh, other communities have done a CPI that kicks in every two years, that keeps that going up, so that you recognize that the citizens may, I mean, I think you had an initiative, that it was an initiative, um uh ordinance that brought you that three thousand dollar cap. The city council had tried to go to seven thousand five hundred, which was sort of a reflection of CPI. The community didn't want that, but that, um so if you're trying to preserve that three thousand, one thing to note, even two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three, that's still, you're looking at just to keep the three thousand about six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that's sort of the minimum increase just to be, to maintain the status quo. Um and the CPI increase, that was another one Bethel did. And so they're one of the most recent smaller communities that redid their code, just so you know. So we do look to them a little bit, see what they came up with.
Do we know that we are going to take that or not on the agenda? Any other last comments? Okay, um are we starting another work session? We do that later? What's the?
Pending agenda.
Well, Holly, how much time do you need? If, at our pending agenda of our regular meeting, if we talk about another work session? I mean, is there any chance that this is happening before the new year or not?
Because we have a budget for.
I think we're about to have a bunch of other.
This is about to be passed in December, yeah. Okay, but can you give Holly maybe tomorrow or sometime we can have figured out? If we need to get something going, we'll get another work session.
Yep.
Or if we need to have our own work session before we call out after, I, I understand.
Right.
I heard that too.
Also, I think if you need to make in some time for the different departments to review, because you know, I mean, we're the users ultimately. And if it's not clear to us, then it's not clear to anybody. And so I think if you get this next draft, have a chance to get certain lead in around to different parts, it's necessary.
And different businesses too, yeah.
Our hope is that we're gonna work with the administration on this draft, walk through it with you, Kevin, walk through it with uh everybody and then uh and then set a work session. That's what we'd like to do, not set the date quite yet, but work through with administration. So the next draft we bring back is the best effort of reflecting what administration wants and what we have from council's last two work sessions. That would be our, um, you know, our preference.
Yeah, very good.
And if council has a work session on the economic development priorities, that would also be good without us. So then that, you know, that works. Okay, goodbye. Thank you. Thank you all.